All right. Good evening, everyone. I call this special city commission meeting to order at 5:01 PM. I am Joe Paduzzi, your current commission president, and I will be chairing this meeting in the mayor's absence. The mayor is representing the city as a member of mayoral delegation to Israel. He sends his best wishes and congratulations to Commissioners Lambert and Fox and Commissioner-Elect Ward, and thanks Commissioner Cho for her dedicated service to the city. I'll take this off. This evening, we will witness the continuity of local government as two current city commissioners are administered the oath of office for second and third terms respectively, and one commissioner-elect is inaugurated into office. At the same time, we will be bidding farewell to a commissioner who has added so much to this dais and has served our constituents admirably for the past four years. Unfortunately, Commissioner Cho is on her way here. She was involved in a traffic delay, so hopefully she'll be here with us in the next few minutes. So we may have to take her out of order, but we will make sure that she is able to address her colleagues here on the dais and the public. That may be her right now. With that being said, I'd like to remind everyone of our rules of civility and decorum. Let me pull that up. Officials should be recognized by the chair and shall not interrupt a speaker. Public comment shall be addressed at the city commission as a whole and not to any individuals on the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, or personal tax are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, or similar demonstrations shall not be permitted. No offenders may be removed from the evening, from the meeting. So before we get to the swearing-in ceremony, we have some formalities to take care of. The first being Resolution 101-22 certifying the results of the election. So it's Resolution Number 101-22 declaring the results of the March 8, 2022, general election for City Commissioner for District One.
So moved.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? There's no more discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. So that was specifically for District One. Do we have to do it for the other districts also, Madam City Attorney?
The other two commissioners were not contested. They were unopposed. They were included on the resolution and included in the motion as unopposed candidates who took office unopposed.
Okay, just, it was a little confusing because it says general election for City Commissioner for District One, so maybe we should do all of them?
You approved one resolution that included all three positions as being seated for this
Okay, so we're good. All right, thank you. Okay, we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is presentation to the commission president. Commissioner Lambert?
Well, thank you so much, Commissioner and President Paduzzi. This is a very small token of appreciation for all of the hard work that it is to fill the shoes of our mayor when he is out, when he's out of town. You cover for meetings, you help lead and guide the commission office, and we just want to say thank you so much for all you've done for the last year.
Thank you so much.
And then you're pulling double duty here.
Thank you. It certainly was an honor to serve this past year as the commission president. Looking forward to welcoming our new president and working with her to ensure a smooth transition. I guess I can safely say "her" since all of my colleagues on this dais are females.
Wise choice.
Yep. So we will move on. The next on the agenda was we were going to recognize Commissioner Cho, but since she's been delayed, we are going to move that to right before Commissioner Comments. So we will move on. Let me just see here. All right, we'll move on to Item 4.1. And actually, do we have a judge here? Yep, perfect, perfect. We'll move on to Item 4.1, swearing-in ceremony for the newly-elected city commissioners for the city of West Palm Beach. Each commissioner will be administered the oath of office individually by the Honorable Dalia H. Y. Circuit Judge. Although applause is certainly welcomed after each commissioner is sworn in, I would ask that commissioners reserve their comments until after the final item on our agenda. Also, commissioners will remain in their current seats on the dais after the swearing-in, and Commissioner-Elect Ward will fill the seat vacated by Commissioner Cho. So Judge Weiss will now administer the oath of office to Commissioner-Elect Kathleen Ward, followed by Commissioners Fox and then Lambert. Judge Weiss? And Commissioner-Elect Ward.
Hello?
Hi.
All right. Raise your right hand. Can you hear me okay? All right, please repeat after me. I, Kathleen Ward.
I, Kathleen Ward.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
And being an officer of the city of West Palm Beach.
And being an officer of the city of West Palm Beach.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
As such officer.
As such officer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the government of the United States.
The Constitution and the government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the charter of the city of West Palm Beach.
Under the charter of the city of West Palm Beach.
And under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
And under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office of City Commissioner.
Of the office of City Commissioner.
Of which I am now about to enter.
Of which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Commissioner Ward. And after you finish signing the paperwork, we'll invite you to take a seat up on the dais next to Commissioner Warren. We will now proceed with the swearing-in ceremony for Commissioner Kristi Fox. Commissioner Fox? And Judge Weiss?
All right, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kristi Fox.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
And being an officer of the city of West Palm Beach.
And of being an officer of the city of West Palm Beach.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
As such officer.
As such officer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the government of the United States.
And the government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the charter of the city of West Palm Beach.
Under the charter of the city of West Palm Beach.
And under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
And under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office of City Commissioner.
Of the office of City Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Commissioner Fox. Just give Commissioner Fox a moment to sign the paperwork before we proceed with the next. Okay, last but certainly not least, Commissioner Lambert will be sworn in by Judge Weiss. Commissioner Lambert, Judge Weiss.
Who do we have here?
This is my husband and son.
This is Monty and Noah.
Congratulations. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Christina Lambert.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
And being an officer of the city of West Palm Beach.
And being an officer of the city of West Palm Beach.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
As such officer.
Of such officer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the government of the United States.
The Constitution and the government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And that I am duly qualified.
And that I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the charter of the city of West Palm Beach.
Under the charter of the city of beautiful West Palm Beach.
And under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
And under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office of City Commissioner.
Of the office of City Commissioner.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Commissioner Lambert. And thank you to Judge Weiss. We so much appreciate you coming here and doing this on this special occasion, and you're certainly free to leave whenever you'd like, or you're free to stay also. Absolutely. Thank you so much. Okay, now moving to the last item on our agenda this evening, the last official item. Item 4.2, election of the President of the City Commission. Ordinarily, the current president nominates a colleague to serve as the next commission president. However, since I am chairing this meeting, I will ask for a nomination motion from one of my colleagues. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, President Paduzzi. It is my honor to nominate Commissioner Kristi Fox.
There's a motion to make Commissioner Kristi Fox the President of the Commission. Is there a second to the motion?
President Paduzzi, I would love to second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of making Commissioner Kristi Fox the President of the City Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, President Fox. So that concludes our formal business this evening. We will now move to Commissioner Comments, and feel free to take your time, just so that we have enough time for Commissioner Cho to get here so that she can make some comments. So I will start with the President of the Commission, Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much. Thank you to Judge Weiss. I know she's not here, but it was wonderful to see her and have her service today. I'd also like to thank the clerk and her team and all else who helped organize both the recent election and today's event. I wholeheartedly want to thank the residents of West Palm Beach for the opportunity to serve. I'm humbled and honored to be your commissioner and look forward to continuing to work with you. To our city's first responders, thank you for your sacrifices that you make each day to put others before yourselves. You are all heroes in my book. To Administrator Johnson and the entire city staff, thank you. To all who worked so hard to make our city such a great place to be. Your roles have been essential to keeping our city running, keeping our events thriving, keeping our city safe, clean, beautiful, and pothole-free, and keeping our residents informed. You are all so appreciated. Thank you so much. To my campaign team, Rick, Kim, Jonathan, Nick, Daniel, and many others who are working behind the scenes, you are the most hardworking and dedicated team. Thank you so much for everything that you do. And I most especially want to thank my family, who is here tonight to cheer me on, my sister Shannon, my brother-in-law Aaron, my nieces Izzy and Darcy. Thank you so much for all that you did, all the doors that you knocked on, and the campaign events that were attended, and no one has supported me in any way that you did. I love you so much. Thank you. You mean everything to me. Two years ago, I was sworn into office on Zoom, and I can definitely say that this is a much better way to do it. The last two years have been quite astonishing. Even before officially being sworn in, the city was thrust into responding to the COVID-19 crisis. We responded quickly and assertively to get help where it was needed most. I'm proud of the work that we were able to do to keep families fed, keep food on the table, keep our businesses open, and services provided. As a leader of the Food, Water, and Medicine Team, I was thrilled that we could partner with the USDA early on and help our city to provide 47,000 boxes of food to residents who were struggling during the pandemic. Since then, we have witnessed one of the most historic economic rebounds in our city's history. We have major financial institutions and beloved restaurants opening doors here. We have the number-five public university in the country bringing a master's program down the street. We have a record number of new residents who want to call West Palm Beach their home. We have a green market that has been voted not once but twice the number-one green market in the whole country. It's important and it's critical that all the success that we experience as a city is shared by all throughout West Palm Beach. Today, West Palm Beach is united in our resolve and our mission to create a more prosperous community that is welcoming, inviting, and provides every resident the chance to succeed. Our city commission works well together because we understand that good policy is shaped by listening to our residents, sharing ideas about our future, and holding ourselves to the utmost degree of integrity and responsibility to those that we serve. West Palm Beach is on the world stage now, and this is our time to shine, but we have to be ready and we have to be prepared. The decisions that we make over the next few years regarding housing, transportation, sustainability, equity, equality, infrastructure, and first responder staffing and resources will be felt for generations to come. You have my commitment to work with the mayor and commissioners on thoughtful planning that moves the city forward, opens doors for everyone, and ensures opportunities for all. I want to thank Mayor James for his vision and creating an environment where we can all work together to best serve our city. To the outgoing commission, President Paduzzi, thank you for all your service the last year. Thank you for all you've done as commission president, as the chair of the audit committee, for handling the budget and office needs of our office, and all the other things that you have done on behalf of our city commission that we might not even know about. You have represented us so well, and you are leaving very big shoes to fill. Thank you. Commissioner Warren, congratulations on your one-year anniversary on this dais. You are such a joy to work with. I appreciate your approach and the invaluable experience that you bring to this commission. Thank you. Commissioner Lambert, congratulations on being reelected unopposed. I look forward to continuing to work with you on the golf course, 8111, all the other important issues that may affect District Five and our entire city. Commissioner Ward, congratulations and welcome. District One is blooming with new opportunities that our residents have waited for for so long. I'm thrilled that they have someone as passionate as you to pick up the reins and help these fantastic projects continue to move forward. This is the honor of a lifetime to be sworn in tonight, to serve my second term, and to be elected as president of the commission in the city I love so much, but it is also a bittersweet moment because the person that I most wish could be here tonight is not here. Many of you know that I lost my mother a couple weeks ago, and to be her daughter felt like having a full-time cheerleader by my side every minute of every day. If she was here, she would be beaming from the front row. She would probably be about 10 minutes late because she would be so busy talking to every security guard and city employee on the way in to make sure that they all know that the commissioner was her daughter. There was no bigger supporter than Karen Fox, both for her family and for all those around her. She always saw the best in people and their potential, even if they didn't quite realize it yet themselves. I hope that I'm able to pick up where she left off and be a cheerleader for all those in my life and for those in the city that could use a little extra boost. I firmly believe the future is so bright for West Palm Beach, and I'm focused on helping shape the progress for the best, and I'm just so grateful to have this opportunity to continue to serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox. Commissioner Lambert?
I'm a little choked up by that. Commissioner Fox is beautiful. Thank you. I know your mother is extremely proud of you. Thank you to Judge Weiss and to all of you for joining us today. This is definitely a very exciting day. Thank you, Ms. Carson, for coordinating all of the details for this evening, to all the city staff who helped make this such a special and memorable event. Since being elected in 2018, I have strived to be a commissioner that focuses on solutions, that focuses on getting things done for our community. I'm truly thankful that you all entrusted me and placed that trust in me for being reelected without opposition this year. Thank you to my family for your love and support and for giving me the opportunity to serve the city that I love. Thank you so much, Monty. Thank you so much, Noah. And thank you so much to the community and the friends who have now become family. I, too, share in your confidence in this city for a shared vision and for a shared future together. We are all witnessing tremendous progress and game-changing initiatives that will define our city for decades to come. Our city leaders have collaborated on ideas and focused on putting personality aside as we focus on the policies that make West Palm Beach a better place to live, work, and play. When I look back at the last two years, it seems like it all happened in the blink of an eye. However, when we start to look back at everything we accomplished, it almost seems like it's been 20 years since we last came together on this conversation. Initiatives like new education grants to support our schools, new initiatives that focus on engaging our Hispanic community, new projects that will define our city's south-end gateway with the golf course redevelopment and 8111 South Dixie site, a focus on protecting our historic LGBTQ landmarks, a renewed approach that engages our community, listens to stakeholders, and creates a community discourse. This doesn't include even many of the exciting proposals that are happening in the wings, University of Florida and projects in our downtown, Historic Northwest and North End neighborhoods. All of these have taken place and taken root in the last two years. And during our city's darkest times, as Commissioner Fox mentioned, we united to resolve to support those who needed it most under the city's COVID-19 Response Task Force. It's truly hard to believe that that was just two years ago. Commissioner Paduzzi, I want to thank you for your year of service as president of our commission. You truly have stepped up and gone with the flow when needed to, so thank you so much for that. Always bringing a sense of levity and of humor to the situation. We really appreciate that. Commissioner Fox, congratulations on your reelection without opposition. I look forward to serving by your side for another year, not only here on the dais but out in the community as well. Thank you. Commissioner Warren, I look forward to learning from you from continuing to serve our community together. Thank you so much for your service. To Mayor James, Administrator Johnson, and to the entire city of West Palm Beach staff, thank you so much for your leadership and for your hard work and dedication to keep our city on the right track. As we continue to push towards progress and maintain our resolve for compromise and collaboration, I want to welcome our newly-elected commissioner, Kathleen Ward. I trust your passion and advocacy for not only the North End but for our entire city as a whole. Here on the dais, you will find individuals and leaders just as passionate as all of you are in helping to move our city and our community forward. Currently, and now is the longest-tenured commissioner serving on this dais, I plan to continue to be a leader our residents can call on, our business owners can trust, and that our neighborhoods can believe in to look out for each of you. I'm looking forward to what the next two years have in store and what we can all accomplish together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Lambert. Commissioner Ward? You have any comments for us this evening?
I'm going to turn that on. Good evening, everyone. I want to first thank the residents of West Palm Beach for the honor to serve you all. I'm very excited about this, and I know she's gone, but I want to say thank you again to Judge Weiss for being here to swear in, and also City Clerk Carson for organizing today, and all the staff that put so much into every single evening possible. And then I want to reserve a special thank you to my teams. First, to my most favorite teammate, my husband. Thank you so much for your support throughout this process and in general. I don't think I could do this without you and continue, can't do this without you, especially with a little toddler who's sitting on your lap. And thank you to the rest of my family for all your support, and as well as my Ward Damon family, all my team who's put up with me being in and out of the office during this process and continue to be in and out of the office. I thank you so much and for showing up tonight. I really appreciate it. And then also to the campaign team, John, Sean, Rick, Kim, you know, I know that others have said it as well, but we really could not do this without you. And I now have a new team of all of you sitting up here, and I'm really excited to get to know you even more than I have as a resident, but also as a collaborator, and I'm very excited. I don't think that I could be more excited to have this group of people up here to work with on making our city so much better than it already is. And that leads me to say congratulations to Commissioner Fox and Commissioner Lambert. I think it says something that you ran unopposed, and your city appreciates all the work that you've done. And then to Mayor James, Commissioner Paduzzi, and Commissioner Warren, I'm ready to work with you and keep the city a great place to call home, and our quality of life fantastic. To Administrator Johnson, I look forward to our partnership and collaboration. And a special note of gratitude to our missing link right now, City Commissioner Kelly Cho. She's been an inspiration and a trusted leader, someone who I've worked with closely throughout her years of service and commitment to our city. And it hasn't gone unnoticed, and I think I speak for everyone here that says thank you. I wish all of her success in the future. And, you know, no election is easy, and I'm thankful to the business leaders, the community, the Chamber of Commerce, our first responders, police and firefighters, and all the volunteers who helped me in my campaign. I visited neighborhoods, church leaders, small businesses, not-for-profit organizations across our city to engage in important conversations about our city's future. And I think most importantly, I listened, and I'll continue to listen. I promise that's one thing that I will continue to do and to advocate for our community. While West Palm Beach is headed in the right direction, I want to ensure that all residents are part of that success, and I'm excited to get to work with this mayor and the commission. Across District One, we have important opportunities ready to move forward that can completely reinvigorate our north end of the city. I'm committed to this progress, keeping the momentum we have seen in the last few years, and I promise to do what I've always done as a community activist, which is listen to our residents, advocate for our neighborhoods, support small businesses, and fight for what I believe is right, just, and fair. Thank you again, and I look forward to serving the city of West Palm Beach.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward, and just as a brief update, Commissioner Cho will be here, but it's going to be a few more minutes, so it looks like it might end up being perfect timing. So Commissioner Warren?
Thank you very much, President Paduzzi. I feel so emotional in this moment. I feel so emotional in this moment, but I do want to say congratulations to all today. This is a very exciting time and a beautiful day in our city's history. It was just one year ago that I went through a very similar process, and I know how exciting this moment can be. A lot has happened in this last year, and we have seen joy, and we've seen sadness, and we've seen tremendous transformation. But this is a great time to be here in West Palm Beach. Commissioner Ward, we welcome you. Welcome. We welcome you, truly with open arms, to the City Commission. I'm looking forward to working with you on many issues that our two districts share. Here you'll find passionate people who care about their community and want to work to make things happen in West Palm Beach so that they can live their highest quality of life. I'm very happy to pass on the torch of the newest Commissioner to you. I know that you will use it to do a lot of wonderful things and ask great questions because as you move forward and the things that you're learning, we all need to hear those things as well. So I encourage you to ask whatever question that you have and know that there are people here that care and will do everything that they can to provide you with the information that you need to succeed and to make the best choices possible. Commissioner Fox, I did not have the opportunity to know your mother, but I do know you, and I do know the relationship and the bond that you have with your sister, and I know the bond that I see with your nieces, and I think it's amazing. And I know that your mother would be very proud, very, very proud of all of you here today. Congratulations on your reelection. Your passion, your gentle strength, and your commitment to our community is exactly what has been needed in West Palm Beach. I'm happy to witness you grow and do the things that you've done and learn as you've moved forward in discovering the communities and the people in the community and moving forward with those relationships that you've been able to develop. Commissioner Lambert, I'm so excited to continue to serve with you. You've always been a motivation to me. Your ability to put people first and make people feel comfortable and let them know that they have somebody that will be their champion is remarkable, and I watch you as you lead that way. Thank you. Commissioner Peduzzi, thank you for your service over the last year as President of the commission. Your advocacy for the office has been commendable. I've watched you make very tough decisions and lead through challenging times and doing things that may have been unpopular, but that's because you took the position as President of the commission very seriously, and that showed in everything that you did, and I want you to know that I saw that. We are at an important time in our history, an inflection point that will require vision, leadership, and stability. I'm excited about being on a team helping lead that charge forward. Mayor James, Administrator Johnson, my colleagues on the commission, city staff, and all the residents of West Palm Beach, I look forward to working collaboratively and in partnership with each of you over the coming year to keep our city moving forward. To those that I've also named, I'd like to thank you very much for teaching me as I've learned over this last year. Thank you for your patience and your kindness and for not letting go of my hand as we do all that we can to serve our city the best way that we can. It is a blessing to be in West Palm Beach. Thank you.
I will now move to my comments. I'll go as slowly as I can to give Commissioner Schof some time, but I'm not usually a slow talker, so what we'll probably do is, once I finish my comment, we will do a brief recess if Commissioner Schof is not here yet, you know, just probably a five-minute recess to give her enough time. She's almost at City Hall, so. So to Commissioner Ward, welcome to the commission. I know that this goes without saying, but you are joining a group of very dedicated individuals who collectively have an enormous responsibility to our residents, businesses, and visitors. With that being said, I have had the opportunity to get to know you over the last several months, and I am absolutely confident that you are ready for the challenges ahead and that you will be a zealous advocate for your constituents. I look forward to working with you, and I congratulate you on your election and swearing in this evening. To Commissioner Lambert, welcome to your third term. You are now the senior member of the West Palm Beach City Commission. I've always admired your motivation, your courage, your tenacity, and above all, your unquestionable devotion to our city and its residents. We are lucky to have you here with us, and I want to personally congratulate you on your reelection. To Commissioner Fox, what can I say? I've known you since our Cardinal Newman High School days. Even though we lost contact with one another for some time, I certainly knew you well enough to know that you'd make a fantastic City Commissioner. Although we don't always agree on every issue, I know that you always base your decisions on what is best for the city. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you, and I congratulate you both on your reelection and your selection as President of the commission. But most of all, I'm proud to call you a friend. So I will ask my colleagues, before we take a brief recess, does anyone have anything to add for the good of the body? Otherwise, we will take a five-minute recess. Okay, we are recessed until 5:41. Okay, we will reconvene this special city commission meeting at 5:41, and we will turn the floor over to Commissioner Schof. Commissioner Schof, welcome. I'm glad you were able to make it.
Thank you, ex-President Peduzzi. You know, I've always wanted to make an entrance, and so today I finally got that opportunity, and it just reminds me, in my last four years of office, the only thing you can expect is the unexpected, and today is no different. So today, we've made it, West Palm Beach. We're here. We're at the bend in the road, and after all, a bend in the road is not the end, as long as you can make the turn. So first, let me say a huge congratulations. I might be the only Commissioner in history that gets to sit on the dais beside her replacement. It's an exciting day. Commissioner Ward, you are now joining the esteemed ranks of leadership of what I consider one of the greatest cities in the world. I am confident today, leaving District One in the hands of you, who is very capable. My best advice to you, Commissioner, as you embark on this great journey, is listen more than you talk, and remember that the popular thing isn't always the right thing, and the right thing isn't always popular, so do what you think is right. To my colleagues on the dais, Commissioners Lambert and Fox, congratulations on another two years, and to both you and Commissioners Peduzzi and Warren, I want to say a deep thank you. Last and never least, Mayor Keith James, you and my colleagues here on the dais, your leadership serves the city extraordinarily, and it has been a true privilege to serve with you. Each of you bring to the table a perspective, and together through vision and sometimes disagreements, I like to think we end up at a better place. I will forever value your leadership and more so, your friendships. A big thank you to the hardest-working staff any administration could have. You all do the work, we just show up on Mondays. Through hurricanes and global pandemics, you've served our residents without fail. From our librarians to our administrative assistants, Publix Works officers, permit processors, you all play a role in making this city great. To our West Palm Beach police officers, our firefighters, and our frontline workers, no one could have ever imagined the challenges that you faced, and thank you for putting your lives on the line for us each and every day. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the work of our commission administrative staff, Claudia Belcher, who works closest with us day in and day out, and today, a very special thanks to Phyllis Brooks, who after 38 years of service is hopefully enjoying some well-deserved rest and relaxation. Phyllis not only held the institutional knowledge of a lifetime of service, but she was also the first to send me a message when my grandmother died. She was the first to check in and see how big my nieces were getting, or she was the one who gave me a phone call when she just hadn't heard from me in a while. So please join me today in giving Phyllis a well-deserved round of applause. Thank you to our residents, who for four years let me borrow this chair to represent us. Thank you for trusting me. This job is a team sport, and I have pushed with your help every step along the way to see this change. To Matt Chambers, Greg Mermegus, and Robert Pick, who four years ago sat me down in a sunroom on 30th Street and said, "We think you could run for commission." This never would have happened without you. Thank you. And last but never least, my family, who forgives every late attendance at an event, always provides the obligatory dinners in the microwave, and never lets me run out of coffee creamer or the support to do what I do day in and day out. I love you very much. Sitting here today, it's still very hard for me to believe, a girl from Sarver, PA, population 8,533, daughter of a steelworker and hairdresser, could set a course headed south with only a college degree and a 1994 Chevy Beretta to settle in a little city called West Palm Beach, and in just a little over a decade later, find that same city offered her opportunity of a lifetime to serve the residents and help lead our city into a new generation. That kind of opportunity doesn't happen anywhere. It's the kind of opportunity that's only possible in a diverse, ever-changing, adapting and growing city, West Palm Beach. It has been the honor of my lifetime to serve as your Commissioner. I'm proud of the work we've done together, and I'm excited for the next chapters. Though I leave this commission seat today, the work doesn't stop. My address will not change, nor will my love for this city. I will continue to stand by our residents, to support the great things that we've started. It's not the end of the book, it's just the turning of the page. And so, in the words of some great philosophers, John, Paul, George, and Ringo, "You say goodbye, I say hello." To be continued, West Palm Beach. Thank you.
You surely will be missed on this dais. Let's start with comments, Commission President Kristi Fox.
Thank you so much. Kelly, Commissioner Schof, I want to thank you so much for your service to West Palm Beach, but "thank you" is not nearly enough to convey my appreciation for all you have done as a leader of this city on this dais. The knowledge you have brought from your professional experience has been significant. Your work on the city's COVID relief effort helped small businesses not just stay alive, but thrive during a pandemic. You have strived to bring equity, equality, and fairness to every vote, and have used your voice to advocate for those who needed it most. You have championed revitalization in the northern part of our city, and your legacy will long be remembered when Curry Park, the Anchor Site, and many other projects that are in the works are completed, but you have proven to be a champion for our entire city. On a personal note, it is your generosity with your time that I will miss the most. When I was first running for office, you took time to join me at events, you made introductions, you had coffee with me when I had questions, you even dropped me off several times when there was no Uber to be found. I will miss your voice on this dais, but I have no doubt you will succeed in everything you do. I wish you the best of luck. I know your business will thrive and all your future endeavors, and I'll look forward to hearing from you as North End Resident Schof anytime there's an issue that we should know about. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Commissioner President Fox. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. It's just like you to make an entrance like that, Commissioner. You know, when I was thinking about what I wanted to say today, I honestly didn't even know where to start, and so I thought about starting at the beginning and thinking about four, almost five years ago when we first met, and I really started to think about, when did we first meet? And I honestly can't remember because everything I remember about that first year, you were there. You were there knocking on doors, you were there out in the community listening, you were even there at debates, and when sometimes it was a stressful moment, finding humor and finding levity in the situation. And I just want to say thank you so much. It was a pleasure to be in the freshman class on this dais with you, and not only for what I have learned from you, but for what you have given to this city. I just want to make sure that everybody knows how much of a fierce advocate that Commissioner Schof has been for the last four years before she was a Commissioner and will continue after she's a Commissioner, I am so sure. Today, I know our city is much more prosperous and safer Today, I know our city is much more prosperous and safer and stronger because of your commitment to our community and your passion for making a difference. Your leadership and your advocacy for those who don't have a voice will be missed, and I know you will continue to stay involved and engaged, and I look forward to that. Thank you for being a tremendous colleague, a strong partner, and a good friend. I wish you the best.
Thank you, Commissioner Lambert. Commissioner Ward.
You know, and I, you know, I wanted to prepare something and sound, you know, organized, but I just couldn't because there's so many things that I want to say, and I want it to sound more sincere, because, you know, I didn't meet Commissioner Schof as a Commissioner. I met her as a neighbor. And I, you know, we moved into the area. I just recently found out, actually, that we moved into the area at the same time. I had thought she had been there for a while, and we volunteered at the Mango Fest together, and we had to walk up and down a hot street for all day long, but we had to talk to each other, and I enjoyed it so thoroughly. I was like, man, I like this woman. Like, I just think that, wow, I'm so happy that I met this person, and that she's a neighbor, and she's in the area, and we just clicked immediately and was so happy when you chose to run. And I think that we've been working collaboratively ever since. And I don't think people realize how difficult it is to step into a position where there isn't necessarily someone leading the way like you do in the private sector. I've continued to say this, that you're thrown into this, and you've got to figure it out. And while you do have other Commissioners to turn to, it certainly isn't the same, but I have that with Commissioner Schof, and she's going to continue to be active. And I'm just so grateful for everything that you've done. You've been a fantastic leader in our district. I want to continue that legacy, and you know there's nothing but love that I have for you, and thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Warren.
That's going to be confusing, right? Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Warren, as we move forward. Hi, Kelly. Thank you so much for your service to West Palm Beach. Thank you for the seniority that you've brought to the dais with your tenure. You've proven to be tireless. You have proven to be a strong voice for your district, for small businesses, for the community, and for positive change. You are not afraid to ask tough questions or dig into details, and you're very smart and caring, and I think all of those things made us a better Commission. I wish you all the success in your future plans and goals. I have no doubt you will continue to stay engaged and involved, and I look forward to meeting you for beverages and conversation after this. Take care. The best.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Schof, it was truly a pleasure serving as your colleague on this dais. You've said before that you're a quote "boots-on-the-ground" kind of gal, or something to that effect. That you truly are. Whether it's helping an eight-year-old little girl, my daughter, who's here in the audience, search for her lost sticks in a city park, or educating us on the intricacies of development and construction issues, you are always right there with your sleeves rolled up and boots on the ground. We will miss you, but we are also confident that you will continue to stay involved, as we know how much you care for this city. Again, thank you for your service, and best of luck in all of your future endeavors. So I believe that wraps up our business here today. Did I miss anything before we adjourn the meeting? Should ask the city attorney, did I hit everything?
I believe you hit everything.
Okay, perfect. Then, without further ado, I will adjourn this meeting, special City Commission meeting, at 5:54 PM.